All right, I'd like to call the public hearing to order, please, for Tuesday, February 21st, 2023 relating to zoning case 2022-17-MA. Before we get started, a couple of pieces of business. For anybody that is planning to speak this evening, we would ask that you please sign in. Again, it's just helpful for all of us to know who's coming up and to have a record of who is speaking. And then I'm going to turn it over to our law director here, Mr. Larry Barbier. He wants to make certain that he gets everybody sworn in.
Anybody who's going to testify in the hearing, please stand at the right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give in this public hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Miller, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, we're here to discuss case number 2022-17-MA. This is a request for a major adjustment to an existing PUD, the applicant, Landmark Recovery of Louisville LLC. Location of the site is 4650 East Galbraith Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45236. And Jeff, will you put the map up on there?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Applicant stated proposed use is inpatient substance use disorder treatment facility. The property, as you can see, it's the I-shaped building here central to the map. It's currently zoned DD Planned Multi-Residence District. The surrounding conditions to the north is DD Planned Multi-Residence District. That is, for practical purposes, is a apartment campus. To the east, OO Planned Office District. To the west, Planned Office District, OO. And to the south, OO Planned Office District. The subject parcel is 3.58 acres in size with 300 feet of frontage on East Galbraith Road. Topography is generally flat, so, excuse me, sloping away from East Galbraith Road. That should state away from. Current ISR is .4764. Proposed ISR is .5074. The applicant has proposed to convert an existing 119-bed nursing home facility into a 132-bed inpatient substance use disorder treatment facility. The history on this site, Hamilton County Commissioners passed resolution number 9-71, excuse me, 97-1 in 1997 for the change of zoning from B, single-family residential, to DD, Planned Multifamily Residential. As part of the resolution, conditions were placed on the property, including two that stated access will only be through a service road and that the current driveway will be taken out when the service road is completed. Carriage Court of Kenwood applied to reopen the driveway in 2001. The zoning commission recommended denial. The applicant removed the request prior to the Sycamore Township trustee hearing. The entry drive was approved as a major adjustment later on by case 2004-06-MA. In 2022, case number 2022-11-MA, Landmark Recovery of Louisville LLC, request for a major adjustment to PUD was denied for 160-bed inpatient-only drug and alcohol addiction rehabilitation facility. On January 9th, 2023, the Sycamore Township Zoning Commission met to consider case number 2022-17-MA in consideration of the major adjustment to the PUD for the subject property of 4650 East Galbraith Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45236. The Sycamore Township Zoning Commission recommended denial of the plan and the proposed use of 132-bed inpatient substance use disorder treatment facility. Zoning compliance review. As an existing double-letter PUD development, zoning compliance is determined by PUD standards and the underlying zoning, DD, Planned Multi-Residence District. As a change of use, the applicant's proposal states that they're intent to operate 132-bed inpatient substance use disorder treatment facility and argues that the use is best categorized as a hospital use. The definition from the Sycamore Township zoning resolution is as follows: Hospital, an institution providing health services and medical or surgical care to persons primarily temporary inpatients with illness, disease, injury, deformity, or other physical or mental condition, and including as an integral part of the institution-related facilities such as laboratories, outpatient facilities, or training facilities. Hospital does not include institutions for the permanent care of or occupation by the poor, infirm, incurable, or insane. The applicant has stated that a variety of treatments ranging from medical detoxification, clinical programming, group therapy, individual therapy, and continuous medical care would take place on-site. As part of the comprehensive submittal, the applicant provided copies of licensure for their facilities. In Ohio, substance use disorder treatment facilities operated by the applicant are licensed by the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. The approved use indicated on the licensure is substance use disorder residential and/or withdrawal management services. Staff is guided by Chapter 23 and specifically by the provisions of Section 23-5 for appropriate standards in the interpretation of use. Based on the applicant's statements of the proposed use and review of uses identified in the licensure documentation, the proposed use is most consistent with the definition of a halfway house as specified by the Sycamore Township zoning resolution. A halfway house is defined by the Sycamore Township zoning resolution as follows: An establishment whose primary purpose is the rehabilitation of persons. Such services include drug and alcohol rehabilitation, assistance to emotionally and mentally disturbed persons, and rehabilitation for prison parolees and juveniles. Chapter 3, District and Zoning Map. The uses permissible with a permitted use zoning certificate, a conditional use zoning certificate, or a planned unit development zoning certificate are summarized in the Table of Permissible Uses found in Table 3-2. Will you put that up for me?
Yes.
The excerpt below from the Table of Institutional Uses indicates that a halfway house is not permitted in the DD district. In summary, it is staff's final determination that the applicant's proposed use best meets the definition of a halfway house as written in Chapter 2 of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution, and the applicant's use is not permissible, is not a permissible use, on the subject site due to the current zoning district designation of DD, Planned Multifamily District. Land use. The adopted land use plan calls for the properties in question to be used as office, and the proposed use as a halfway house would be in conflict with the DD Planned Multifamily District. The proposed use submitted by the applicant would require a rezoning to FF, Planned Light Industrial District, and is outside the scope of the current review. However, it should be noted that a zone change would be inconsistent with recently adopted land use plan, creating an instance of spot zoning, and create a significant parking deficit in the applicant's proposal. Zoning authority. Chapter 19, Decision Making, Administrative Bodies and Officials, outlines the specific authorities granted to the zoning commission and the Board of Trustees for the purposes of carrying out the duties of the zoning resolution. It is clear that neither public body was granted the authority to deviate from or approve a use in conflict with the permissible use table as specified, Table 3-2, of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution. Staff conclusion. Based on the applicant's submitted documentation, staff has determined that the proposed use is most accurately categorized as a halfway house as defined in Chapter 2 of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution. The halfway house use is not a permissible use in the DD Planned Multifamily District, which the applicant's site is currently zoned. Furthermore, it is clear that neither the zoning commission nor the Board of Trustees has the authority to grant approval of the applicant's proposal per Chapter 19. Based on the provisions of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution and in consideration of the denial decision of the Sycamore Township Zoning Commission on January 9th, 2023, staff respectfully advises denial of the application.
Just to follow up a little bit on what you said, are there parcels in Sycamore Township that will be appropriately zoned for a halfway house?
Yes, sir. There are zoning, there are parcels in the township that are properly zoned. There is also a newly established land use plan that allows for zone change to light industrial districts that would also facilitate the use of the site, the uses as described by the applicant.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have any at this time.
I guess the only one I would have is just so we explain for the record in this hearing. Mr. Miller, you are now the administrator in Delhi Township. Would you explain why you're here this evening?
I am still here in my capacity as a consultant with Sycamore Township. I'm here in no way, shape, or form representing Delhi Township. This was a transition agreement that was agreed to when I accepted the position in Delhi. So I am here representing Sycamore Township.
Thank you very much.
All right, any, no other questions from up here? I would then invite our friends from Landmark to the podium. If you could do us a favor and state your name and address for the record, that would be helpful. And I think you two, it looks like you've tag teamed on whatever presentation materials are ready to go, so.
Good evening. Joe Miller, 52 East Gate Street, Columbus, 43215. Madam Chairwoman and members of the Board of Trustees, thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate it. I'm joined by my colleague Chris Ingram on behalf of Landmark. We are also joined by representatives of Landmark, Michelle Lovett. You will be hearing from Alvin Luster, Landmark's Vice President of Implementation, as well as Dr. Elijah Wilder, Landmark's Regional Director of Medical Operations, and Danielle Gray. Ms. Gray is the Executive Director of Ohio Recovery Housing and an expert on public health and recovery housing. We also, in case there are questions about the site, we have our architect, Randy Merrill, here as well. My intention, Madam Chairwoman, would be to present an opening presentation, the testimony of three witnesses, and brief closing remarks. So we are before you this evening for the limited purpose of your approval of Landmark's intended treatment facility, as you heard, at 4650 East Galbraith Road. You have before you, obviously, the brief that we sent last night and extensive evidence in support of Landmark's application. We'd like to amplify that evidence with live testimony this evening. I submit to you that this matter should be very straightforward. Landmark maintains that it should be treated as an expressly permitted hospital use for the reasons set forth in our brief. We disagree that its classification as a halfway house, as was only recently suggested by Mr. Miller and the Planning Commission, that it is not appropriate classified as a halfway house. But instead, as the township's prior zoning administrator previously and repeatedly recognized in prior reports, Landmark's use is most consistent with a hospital and thus should be approved by this board. I'm going to see if I'm able to do this, Jeff. I appreciate your help. So far, not so. Success. We are here tonight seeking a major adjustment to an existing PUD plan application. That sounds, as it's termed, major under your code, but really, I think we agree with staff, all we're here to talk about is the proposed use. Is the use permitted? If so, then the major adjustment to the existing PUD plan should be granted. You have evidence before you and will hear testimony that this treatment facility is a hospital. That is a fully permitted use in the DD Planned District. You will also hear tonight, including testimony that sets forth, Landmark provides health services and medical care. Landmark proposed use serves temporary inpatients. Inpatients, not permanent or even transitory residents, like in a halfway house, but instead, inpatients as contemplated by the township code, suffering from the disease of addiction with an average stay of four to five weeks. Landmark's proposed use includes laboratory and internal training facilities that are an integral part of this operation, meeting the definition of a hospital use. If we look at the next slide, and I'll stop clicking on the right in a moment, I'm sure you're well familiar with the site's 4650 East Galbraith Road. It previously operated as Carriage Court of Kenwood, a nursing home or assisted living facility until just this past fall in October. It had 123 residents and 63 parking spots. The character of the surrounding neighborhood, as I'm sure you're aware, are hospitals and medical uses. And so what do we propose? What has Landmark brought forth?
This one might be a little...
No, I just keep hitting the right side of the mouse. I just need to hit the left, but I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Simple as that. So here is the site plan for the facility planned for this address to be operated by Landmark Recovery of Cincinnati, an inpatient substance use disorder treatment facility serving private pay patients. This plan is fully conforming, 132 beds, 132 parking spaces. There are no variances sought. Instead, we are simply saying that this is a permitted use and the major adjustment needs to be improved. I'd like to go over very briefly how we got here to you today. Namely, we, Landmark filed an application with the township, and then two supplements were made before the current application that you have before you today. Each time, the township denied Landmark's proposal or recommended denial of the application because of inadequate parking. Inadequate parking only. And as I just described, parking is no longer an issue. As set forth in the slide, each staff report issued by the township determine that Landmark's proposed use is most consistent with the characteristics of a hospital. That's a quote. That determination was set forth by staff on August 5th, 2022, September 9th, 2022, and October 3rd, 2022. Landmark's use has not changed at all. The only thing that changed is we fixed our parking problem. And so now, suddenly, the use is incorrectly characterized as a halfway house. Bear with me as we look at the code itself, because there is a definition of hospital. And I'll pick the words most relevant from this definition. A hospital, by the township's code, is an institution providing health services and medical care to persons primarily temporary inpatients. Exactly what we have here, with illness, disease, or other physical or mental condition, including as an integral part of the institution, related facilities such as laboratories or training facilities. Landmark's treatment facility provides just these things. Specifically, as I mentioned a moment ago, health and medical care to inpatients suffering from the disease of addiction, as well as the accompanying physical and mental conditions. And so let's talk about that further. What uses will be done on-site? What services will be provided? This is absolutely institutional in character. This is not a residential home. The fixtures, furniture, security, everything are not consistent with residential uses. Instead, they are institutional for our inpatients who stay for a very temporary period. There will be 24-hour nursing care on-site, round-the-clock health services, and medical care provided to those inpatients. There will be the treatment of alcohol and drug addiction. Landmark clients do go through a medical detox upon admission and receive individualized clinical and therapeutic treatment care on a temporary basis. I'm getting better with the mouse. In, consistent with that definition of hospital, it will serve primarily inpatients with illness, disease, or other physical or mental condition. So those inpatients, they come on average for 28 to 35 days. There are no permanent residents. There are no residents at all. Again, inpatient treatment, consistent with what's contemplated by the definition of hospital. And so Landmark will treat concurring physical and mental health conditions, along with the addiction care that they provide. And frankly, they will be able on-site, consistent with a hospital, to treat all physical and mental conditions that the inpatients may have beyond an ER or an ICU setting. There won't be that critical care component, but every other aspect of the medical care can be provided to these inpatients on-site. Likewise, we will have laboratory services. We will have training facilities. There will be recreational training within a confined space. There will be group therapy rooms, multipurpose rooms for counseling, as well as medical offices. So these are all training facilities consistent with your definition of hospital. And I would also note, just as the township has repeatedly acknowledged, hospital uses, the excerpt is there, in fact, are consistent with the township land use plan. When this is properly categorized as a hospital, we are consistent with the land use plan, as that excerpt there shows. Furthermore, we think we're tremendously consistent with the neighborhood around. Just think of what's in the immediate vicinity of this site. Jewish hospital, Jewish hospital medical buildings, Cincinnati General Surgeons, Mercy Health, Kenwood Surgery Center, Kenwood Breast Surgery Center. This facility cannot be treated differently than similarly situated businesses. And so let me talk a little bit about the law before we turn to the facts and evidence this evening. As your law director would advise you, Ohio law is clear that restrictions on the use of real property must be construed in favor of the property owner. If there is any restriction on the free use of property, it can't be extended beyond what's in the code. And in fact, if there is any ambiguity, it must be construed in favor of the property owner. So for instance, if you think any part of this falls within the definition of the hospital classification, you need to find for Landmark Recovery under Ohio law. And I would point out that failure to prove this particular treatment facility would violate Ohio law as well as the U.S. Constitution. Businesses, as well as individuals, have the right to be free from arbitrary zoning decisions. And when we were told three different times we're a hospital use, and then suddenly when we don't need any variances, we're a halfway house, that feels arbitrary. Likewise, this applicant is entitled to equal protection under the law, to be treated the same as similarly situated owners. That poses a problem under the equal protection clause otherwise. And likewise, for these particular inpatients, there are protections under federal law. The Americans with Disabilities Act and the Rehabilitation Act for entities such as the township that receive federal funding cannot discriminate against addiction and addicts or persons with mental health issues because they are considered disabled under both of those acts. So if the township were to deny this application, it does needlessly subject the township to potential liability for damages, for delay, for attorney's fees recoverable under the federal civil rights laws. And so we submit to you that the prudent course is to approve the application. But let me step back and say, it's also just the right thing to do. It is well documented that Hamilton County has had and continues to have a severe opioid addiction problem, just like the rest of Ohio. And as Mr. Luster and Dr. Wilder will further explain, Landmark enjoys significant success at its other facilities. It is an established national entity that has great success in helping to treat these disabled individuals to turn their life around. Landmark likewise prides itself on maintaining clean, secure, and safe facilities. Its services are tightly regulated, and we abide by all state licensures and regulations. So we pride ourselves, Landmark prides itself, on working with local communities to become a resource, to help get rid of this plight, and to help people, as I said, turn their life around. So again, approval is not only, in our opinion, required under the township's own code, Ohio and federal law, it's also just the right thing for the township to do for its residents. So we thank you for your consideration and look forward to your approval. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Ingram to come forward with Mr. Alvin Luster.
Before you present your evidence, I just want to make sure that we're clear on the record. Yesterday evening, you sent us affidavits of Alvin Luster, Danielle Gray, and Elijah Wilder. I didn't see all of them in your exhibit booklet that you gave us, but we just gave it to us right before the hearing. Are you going to submit each of those three affidavits into evidence for the consideration of the trustees at this meeting?
Yes, Mr. Barbier, and they should all be there. It should be Exhibits 1, 2, and 11.
Okay, I'll look quickly through it. I just have five minutes to look at it, but I did look through what you gave us yesterday. I just wanted to make sure that all three of those affidavits are being submitted in person.
Yes, I believe they are at 1, 2, and 11. And if it's helpful for the record, before we conclude tonight, we'll formally move into evidence our exhibits in our brief as well as our presentation.
I have a question also, and you just answered one of them as the presentation being presented. You cited several findings, as you termed it, I think, from the Township Zoning Department as to this being a hospital. But each of the statements you quoted in your brief and on screen is always prefaced with "based on the applicant's statements," or in one instance, some variation on that. The applicant's proposal states, I think it says there. Is there an instance of a finding without that preparatory statement tying it to what the applicant presented that's in the record?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. James, but what we think is meant by staff there is they reviewed the information regarding Landmark's operations and believe they were most appropriately classified as a hospital. So too, tonight, we believe, based on the overwhelming evidence before you, you should likewise agree that the intended use for this is consistent with a hospital.
Just one other question. The original application to the earlier iteration of this, the use stated by the applicant was, in fact, hospital, wasn't it, on the application form?
That the applicant agrees with staff until the very recent kind of reversal that this is most consistent with a hospital use.
Right, that wasn't my question, though. The applicant characterized it as hospital on the application form submitted to the township. Isn't that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so frankly, our position has been very consistent since July of last year of what the intended use is for the site, and until recently. We are gratified to have staff's agreement in that regard. Good afternoon, members of the board. For purposes of the record, my name is Chris Ingram, 52 East Gate Street, Columbus, Ohio. And at this time, Landmark would call Alvin Luster. Can you please state your name for the record?
Alvin Luster.
And Mr. Luster, what is your current title with Landmark?
I'm the Vice President of New Facility Implementation.
Say it again, please.
Vice President of New Facility Implementation.
And Mr. Luster, how long have you worked at Landmark?
A little over two years.
And what positions have you held during those two years at Landmark?
I've worked in a facility as a registered nurse. I worked in a facility as a Director of Nursing. Was then promoted to Regional Nursing Consultant, then Director of New Facility Implementation, and now Vice President.
Okay, Steve. You've held many roles with Landmark. What does your current role entail?
I manage a team of consultants that are responsible for preparing facilities and then training staff at new facilities to get them open.
And about how large is your team?
About 15 employees.
Okay. And just during the course of the last year, approximately how many facilities has your team opened within the last year?
We've opened about nine facilities in the past year.
Okay. And where all have those facilities been located?
Ohio, Indiana, Michigan, Tennessee, Colorado, Virginia.
Okay. And I know you mentioned you're a registered nurse. Can you tell the board your education background?
I have a degree in registered nursing.
Any licensures or certifications?
I am a certified emergency medical technician, but I'm also certified in teaching basic life support and advanced life support.
And Mr. Luster, I would like for you to review what's been marked as Exhibit 1 to our brief. And if anyone here, if any of the board members need a copy of Exhibit 1, I have extra hard copy. Okay, Mr. Luster, Exhibit 1 is the affidavit of Alvin Luster. Can you turn to page 2, please? I'm sorry, page 3, the last page. Is that your signature on page 4?
Yes, it is.
And reviewing your affidavit, Mr. Luster, is everything stated in that affidavit true and correct?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Luster, I would like to talk about Landmark and the treatment facility being proposed here in Sycamore Township. Can you please tell the board about Landmark and the treatment services it provides?
Landmark operates a network of facilities across the country that provide medical and clinical treatment for patients with substance use disorder and other co-occurring medical conditions.
Okay. So it's not just substance use disorders, it also includes other medical conditions? Is that fair?
That's correct, yes.
And concerning the property here in Sycamore Township, what are Landmark's plans for the property that's located at 4650 East Galbraith Road?
Be a... Be a facility that would provide the same services I just explained.
Okay, so the medical and clinical treatment services?
Of substance use disorder and other co-occurring medical conditions.
Thank you. Now what types of changes does Landmark plan to make to the existing building?
We would not make any changes to the exterior of the building. The only changes interior would be aesthetic, or to meet our needs so that we have nursing stations, offices for individual therapy sessions, group rooms, patient rooms, all of those things, recreational areas, and exercise rooms.
Will there be any counseling or medical offices?
Yes.
And will the proposed facility have any green space between the parking lot and Galbraith Road?
Yes.
Will the proposed facility modify any recorded easements?
No.
Will the proposed facility materially alter the access points to Galbraith Road?
No.
Okay. As far as operations go, how many jobs will Landmark's treatment facility bring to Sycamore Township?
This facility will employ approximately 100 full-time staff.
Okay, and of those staff, how many will be nurses?
Approximately 20.
Okay. Any nurse practitioners?
Two full-time nurse practitioners, yes.
How many licensed clinical group therapists?
Approximately nine.
And how many individual therapists?
Approximately 13.
Okay. And how many medical support technicians or assistants will be employed at this facility?
Will be around 40.
All right, of those medical jobs that you just summarized for us, what is going to be the average salary or the average wage?
Average salary is about $60,000 a year.
Now let's talk for a second, for the board's benefit, about the patients that will be served. What types of patients will this treatment facility serve?
Will serve temporary inpatients who are suffering from substance use disorder and other medical conditions.
Okay, so that's those co-occurring medical conditions you referenced earlier?
Yes.
Thank you. And how many patients will this treatment facility serve?
Up to 132.
Okay, and is that based on the number of beds?
Yes.
So this facility will not serve anyone beyond the number of beds?
Correct.
Okay. And if you could, sir, if you could describe to the board Landmark's typical patient acceptance process, so in other words, if I'm a prospective patient, can you walk us through Landmark's process?
Patient would reach out to an admission consultant who would verify insurance or private pay in some situations. They would be then sent to the facility where they would meet with a nurse to go through a nursing assessment, they would meet with a nurse practitioner for a more in-depth assessment, and then meet with a clinical provider before they're then admitted onto the nursing floor.
Okay, and I think I heard you say you'd, one of the initial steps is verifying their insurance?
Correct.
So are these patients private pay? Are they paying for this for themselves, or how does that work?
Will be private insurance, yes.
Okay. And then how long is the average stay in Landmark's experience for its facilities like this one?
Approximately 28 to 35 days.
Okay, and who decides, or who makes the decision as to how long the duration of the stay should be?
Primarily decided by the clinicians and/or patient's insurance provider.
Okay. So there's, when a patient, when you walked through the patient acceptance process, I didn't hear anything about a lease. Are there lease agreements?
No.
Okay, so it's not like Landmark's renting out its rents, correct?
Correct.
And with respect to your patients, do Landmark's patients at facilities like this one have their own vehicles typically?
Typically, no.
And why not?
Typically, they are brought to the facility. We would hope that patients who are suffering from substance use disorder wouldn't drive themselves to the facility.
Okay. So then what's the visitation policy like for a facility like this one?
Typically, we do not allow visitors unless it's pre-approved and in certain circumstances, usually only on Saturdays and for a short period of time. And it wouldn't be for all 132 patients, it's a small percentage of that each week.
Okay, so when are the visitation hours? Are there set visitation hours?
Yes, it's only on Saturday for about a four-hour period.
Okay. So based on your testimony, would it even be appropriate to have, you know, 132 parking spaces for 132 maximum beds?
I think it's a lot more than we need, but...
Now, with respect to Landmark's patients, some of those patients do require medication-assisted treatment, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you describe the general procedure for Landmark's medication-assisted treatment? What the overall process looks like?
Medications are administered by nursing staff, typically two to three times a day. Those medications are kept under lock and key. They're only administered one dose at a time, and the patient would take that medication in front of nursing staff, where we would check to make sure that it has been swallowed before they walk away.
And who's prescribing those medications generally?
It would be our nurse practitioners or medical director.
Okay. And who's overseeing the dosages of the medications that are being dispensed?
Yeah, the nurse practitioners or the medical director.
Okay, let's briefly cover the security for this facility. Will, you know, what types of security will be provided at this treatment facility?
So our facility is going to be staffed and monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We would have delayed egress on all exit doors that alarms after 15 seconds of the bar being pushed. Most interior doors would have card reader-only access. We also have interior and exterior cameras that are monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
That's all the questions I have for you this time.
Hello, Mr. Luster. I've got a couple of questions I'd like to ask you. I'm Larry Barbier, and I'm the law director. You're under oath for your testimony here today, you understand that, right?
Yes.
And you submitted an affidavit in this case, and I assume you swore under oath to what you said in the affidavit too, right?
Yes.
You have an affidavit in front of you there?
I do.
Would you please read paragraph 4 to us?
Landmark provides care to disabled community members suffering from mental health and substance use disorder, including narcotic and alcohol addiction.
Is that a true statement?
Yes, it is.
And I believe you testified here today that the average stay is 28 to 35 days?
That's correct.
And is the goal to rehabilitate somebody during that period of time?
The goal would be for them to be, to go through a medical detox from whatever substance that they have an issue with, and then be ready to go out into the community.
Well, the primary goal of Landmark is to rehabilitate these people who come into Landmark for treatment so that they can go out into the community after the early weeks. Is that fair? And the vast majority of the people you treat include people who are there for drug and alcohol rehabilitation, or assistance for emotionally or mentally disturbed people, correct?
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you. And trustees?
No, they don't have any questions.
Okay, at this time, Landmark would call Dr. Elijah Wilder. Good afternoon. Can you please state your name for the record?
Elijah Wilder.
And Dr. Wilder, what is your current title at Landmark?
Regional Medical Director.
Okay, and what does your role as the regional medical director entail?
I foresee, well, I supervise and kind of head up all the medical operations through all the facilities that are within my region. A big part of that is also liaising with the operations team, kind of brainstorming other operation issues, but mainly focused on the medical side of Landmark.
Okay, and how long have you worked at Landmark?
Going on three years, so about two and a half years at current.
Okay, and how long have you been working in this area for, in this general area or industry?
Since 2013, I've been doing psychiatry and addiction psychiatry.
Okay. And can you explain to the board, you know, the education or the levels of degrees that you've obtained?
Had a Bachelor of Science degree, then I went to medical school. After medical school, I did one-year internship, residency training for psychiatry, and then subspecialty training specifically in addiction psychiatry.
Okay, and where did you receive your medical degree?
Philadelphia College of Osteopathic Medicine.
Okay, and where did you do your residency?
Duke University Medical Center.
All right, and how about your fellowship in addiction psychiatry?
That was here at University of Cincinnati.
Okay, how long, actually, where do you currently live?
About five minutes from here.
Okay. And how long have you lived in this area?
I've been in Cincinnati for about five, six years, then moved to this area in Blue Ash about two years now.
Okay. And do you have any professional licenses or certifications?
I do. I'm board certified in psychiatry, I'm board certified in addiction psychiatry, and I'm licensed in multiple states to practice.
Now I have before you what's been marked as Exhibit 2 to our hearing brief, to Landmark's hearing brief. If you could flip to the last page, please, Dr. Wilder. And if any of the board members need a hard copy of Exhibit 2. And looking at the last page, Dr. Wilder, is that your electronic signature?
Yes, it is.
And looking at Exhibit 2, Dr. Wilder, is everything set forth in this exhibit true and correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'd like to start with the services at Landmark's treatment facility that would be here in Sycamore Township. What type of services will Landmark offer at the treatment facility?
By definition, folks are coming in because they need acute medical detox. Some substances are more potentially deadly to withdraw from, like alcohol or benzos. Some substances are more just difficult to come off of without medications like opiates. But that is the center and kind of the crux of why patients come to the facility. Why patients are there, or while they are there, we also treat medical issues that come up, anything from diabetes to blood pressure, an infection. We can even do certain procedures such as draining and abscess, you know, different things like that. And any psychiatric comorbidities, they may also be there. If someone suffers from depression, we'll also treat their depression. If someone has anxiety, PTSD, insomnia, we're also addressing all those issues while they're present with us.
And so I don't know if this is a fair question, but in your experience, Dr. Wilder, approximately how many of your patients have, you know, more than just medical detox need, but they have all these, you know, co-occurring issues, medical issues?
The majority. It's hard to put a number on it, 80 to 90% would be a solid guess.
And then in addition to the medical detox services, what other types of clinical treatments or treatment programs would be provided by Landmark at this facility?
There's therapy, group therapy, individual therapy, coping skills, all those other kind of psychosocial modalities alongside of the medical treatment.
And your professional experience is in addiction, an illness, or disease?
Most definitely so, yes.
And can you explain why?
Everything that research has shown us, and there's been tons of money, both federal and local, pouring into exploring addiction, it's an issue that's not going anywhere, it's only been getting worse, it's everywhere across the country. Folks may have some certain inherent predilections towards illness. It's not uncommon for folks to explore substances in adolescence, but for a subset of folks, perhaps because of genetic predisposition, perhaps because of trauma, other family situations that are going on, they wind up on a road where it's not just a once or twice, or a casual relationship with alcohol, or a casual relationship with marijuana. Their entire brain gets hijacked. And once you're in the throes of repeated exposure to a substance, you get physiologic tolerance, you get dependence, you get withdrawal from the substance. And with things such as alcohol, if you drink enough for a certain period of time, if you want to stop drinking, if you do that, suddenly you can actually die from delirium tremens, you can have seizures, it can be deadly, benzodiazepines are the same thing. Another substance that has a physiologic withdrawal process is opiates. You cannot overtly die from opiate withdrawal unless you had some severe, maybe cardiac comorbidity. But the illness that comes from trying to come off of pain medicines is very difficult to get through. There's severe nausea, severe pain, severe insomnia, and as bad as folks want to quit, the physiology and the hardwiring of their brain actually changes as well. Your frontal cortex is not as functional as it typically is, your lower brainstem functions, your basal ganglia, midbrain structures kind of take over, and it's all about trying to maintain that balance that's thrown off by the substances and by the intoxication and withdrawal process.
And so all of those issues that you just described, you know, in addition to just the addiction itself, but all these additional, you know, medical symptoms and side effects from the prolonged use of narcotics and drugs, is Landmark going to be treating all of those additional medical issues in addition to just the detoxification process?
We treat absolutely everything we can when someone comes in. Again, diabetes, blood pressure, even if someone injures themselves, say they fall and trip and bang their knee up, we can deal with that. The only thing that we cannot keep in-house is if something rises to the severity where it needs an ICU stay. There's something called ASAM, is the American Society of Addiction Medicine, and they kind of set forth general guidelines for the practice of addiction medicine in this country. And Landmark falls at a 3.7 level of care. The levels go from zero area to four. The only thing higher than a 3.7 is a four. That's a true ICU stay where someone has to be intubated. But up until that point, we manage everything, which, and by definition, a 3.7 level of care requires 24-hour nursing presence. Anything that doesn't have 24-hour nursing is less than a 3.7 level of care. So yeah, we do everything we can to help folks, and we do unless they require something more severe. If they fall and, you know, hit their head and, you know, which is rare, but that could happen, or if someone has, you know, heart issues, and they come in for detox, and they start to have a cardiac event, we're going to send them to the local hospitals so they can get their, you know, their heart issue stabilized and...
Okay. Now, you testified earlier that you've lived in this area for several years. Is addiction prevalent in Hamilton County, in your opinion?
Well, it's not necessarily my opinion. My opinion is yes, but the statistics show that very clearly. In the whole U.S., Kentucky, Indiana, Ohio region is one of the worst areas in the whole country. And then as far as Hamilton County, I think we have 50 to 70 overdose deaths per week. And the last I checked, we were in the top, I think, 15 counties for the whole, you know, for the whole area of Ohio.
Okay, and are you familiar with halfway houses, Dr. Wilder?
Yes, I am.
Okay, can you explain to the board the distinction between a halfway house and the types of services that Landmark's going to provide at this facility?
I mean, the two are just completely different, different things. 3.7 level of care, which is what Landmark is, is acute medical detox. That's what it is, that's the function that it serves. Halfway houses are somewhere where someone goes after they leave an inpatient unit. We actually refer folks to halfway houses when they're finished with detox from us. As a psychiatrist, I have referred people to halfway houses when I worked on an inpatient unit, when I've worked in outpatient centers. Halfway houses are places where folks go to live for long periods of time. There's not medical care there, there's not medical staff there. In fact, some of our patients, depending on what medications they leave on, they can't even stay at a halfway house because they will not allow certain medications there. So the two are, I mean, they're just, they're just different. So, the two are, I mean, they're just, they're just different.
Okay, so is there any nursing staff on site at any halfway house, to your knowledge?
None that I've ever, no, no, no.
No further questions at this time, Dr. Wilder, thank you.
Dr. Wilder, I just have a couple of questions. I'm Larry Barbier. Do you have your affidavit in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Would you please read paragraph five?
Landmark provides care to disabled community members suffering from mental health and substance use disorders, including narcotic and alcohol addiction.
And is that a true statement?
Yes.
Now, you said something, and you said it pretty quickly, and I don't write as quickly as you were talking, so I want to make sure I got it right. I think you said that the crux of why people come to Landmark is for medical detox.
Correct.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
And when you say crux, does that mean the main reason?
Yes.
Primary purpose?
Yes.
And when you talk about medical detox, you're talking about rehabilitation, right?
I heard that question asked earlier, and I, the words are being used in kind of a sloppy fashion. When someone is treating an alcohol use disorder or a substance use disorder, I break them up into two phases. So, if someone has a true physiologic withdrawal process, one that's potentially deadly, you have to treat that with a withdrawal process, well, I'm sorry, with a detox process, before you can even think about doing rehabilitation. So, as with any mental health disorder, even with many chronic medical illnesses, this is not, you deal with it for one week and you're magically cured. The medical detox portion is the very first part of it that has to be addressed so someone doesn't die. And once the medical process is stabilized, then you can begin the process of rehabilitation.
Well, and I think that's what I was going to get at. The crux or the main reason or the primary purpose that people come initially is to get medically detoxed, right?
Yes.
And they don't just stay there a week, though, they stay there 28 to 35 days, I think, as you said in your affidavit, right?
Most do, yes.
And the ultimate aim is so that when they leave, they can go back out and function in society, right?
The way it's worded, I'm having a hard time really, really answering it.
You don't want them to be able to go out and function in society when they leave?
That's the hope, to start getting on a better path, to do better in society, yes.
And you would agree with me that that is the crux of what the word rehabilitation means, right?
No, I can't say that, that's a very subjective definition to what rehabilitation means.
All right, that's all I have, thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I could follow up on that. Dr. Wilder, if you could explain to the board the distinction that you're trying to explain between what's being phrased as rehabilitation versus the medical detox, the initial stage?
Yeah, I mean, I'll try to explain it again the best I can. Rehabilitation, to me, means a lot of different things. Someone can need physical therapy and need rehabilitation, or have a cardiac event and need cardiac rehabilitation. Rehabilitation means a process of healing. And surely, someone with a substance use disorder is going to be on the process towards healing and getting past their illness, and uncovering what was underneath, and wanting to be a better person, and get their job back, and their family back, and treating their depression, and their post-traumatic stress disorder. But one thing that sets this apart, again, is for many of these substances, not all, but for many of them, there is a very distinct acute detox period, that if that part is not treated correctly, people can and do die from that. And that's the part that sets it apart.
Okay, I've got that, you've said that clearly. But that's the first step to rehabilitation, right?
For folks who have a true physiologic withdrawal process, that part has to happen, yes.
Thank you. That's all I got.
One question. Relapsing, recidivism, do you see people, once they leave after 28 or 35 days, do you see them back again?
Of course, it happens sometimes, yes.
Is there, is there a rate, is there a ratio, is there a standard, standard metric that you would apply to that? What's the, what's the relapse percentage that you come back, they come back, they've done their 28 or 35 days, they spent that time, and then they come back to you? Because it's not, it's not an easy process.
Right.
What percentage would you assign to that?
Can I give a firm, you know?
Is there an industry, is there an industry standard, is there a state, are there statewide percentages that you would refer to?
I'm sure there probably is somewhere. I mean, it's no different, any chronic illness has periods of relapse and recovery, it's just like diabetes. Diabetes is a chronic illness. People may get a handle on their blood sugar, and then all of a sudden, they're back off the rails again, and their blood sugar's horrible. Or people trying to watch their weight, they may get on a diet and lose a couple pounds, and then they're off again, and they're still eating food they're not supposed to eat again. So, all chronic illnesses have, have relapse rates, and I don't have exact numbers for those. I don't, maybe 50% would be a guess, 40%, I don't know.
And you had mentioned you are the regional, correct me if I'm wrong, you're the regional medical director?
Correct, yes.
And so, how many, how many facilities do you oversee?
At current, eight facilities at current, yes.
And so, do you typically just, do you float amongst those, or how does, how does, how does your role unfold, I guess, is what I'm asking you?
Right. So, every day is contact with every single facility. I can rotate, you know, which facilities I go to and visit. If someone's having a problem, obviously, I'm going to be there, I'm going to be in person, I'm going to be problem solving. But I have contact with all the nurse practitioners every day. I'm reviewing charts, signing notes every day. Complicated patients that come in, I'm on the phone, we're talking through how to do these things. If the staff, the administrative staff, needs me, phone call. I'm answering phone in the mornings, at night times, on the weekends, I'm very available.
And so, where are your eight facilities?
There are, let's see, in Indiana, there are one, two, three in Indiana, there are two in Ohio, and then there's one in Michigan. How many is that?
Thank you.
Maybe six.
Six, and then two in Kentucky.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilder, please. At this time, Landmark would call Danielle Gray. I'm going to be using copies of what's been marked as Exhibit 11 in your binders. Let me know if you need any copies. Please state your name for the record.
Danielle Gray.
Okay, Ms. Gray, what is your current occupation?
I serve as the Executive Director for Ohio Recovery Housing.
Ms. Gray, could you speak up a little bit more, please? Thank you. Maybe give us that title again?
Do I repeat that?
Yeah.
Okay, I serve as the Executive Director for Ohio Recovery Housing.
And how long have you worked with Ohio Recovery Housing?
Five and a half years.
And could you explain to the board what Ohio Recovery Housing is?
We are a nonprofit organization with a mission to increase access to and the quality of recovery housing for Ohioans with substance use disorders.
Okay, and approximately how many?
I'm sorry, could you, sorry, could you speak a little louder?
Yeah, we're having a hard time hearing you.
You mean, switch sides? Okay, all right.
Thank you. And your last answer again was?
We are a nonprofit organization with a mission to increase access to and the quality of recovery housing for Ohioans with substance use disorders.
Thank you.
And how many organizations participate or involved in Ohio Recovery Housing?
We currently have around 120 organizations operating over 400 properties that are certified under the quality standards that we implement in Ohio.
Okay, and Ms. Gray, for the board's benefit, have you obtained any college degrees or professional degrees?
Yes, I have a Master's in Public Health from Ohio State University.
And do you have any professional licenses or certifications?
Yes, I am certified in public health by the National Board of Public Health Examiners.
And what professional experience do you have in recovery housing besides working with the Ohio Recovery Housing Organization?
Well, my professional experience comes from working with Ohio Recovery Housing, and in my role, I write best practice guidance, I provide training, technical assistance, I oversee our process for certifying recovery homes as meeting national quality standards, provide technical assistance to organizations seeking to open recovery homes, and then in general, just provide education on recovery housing. I also track resident outcomes and participate with researchers to research recovery housing and form new best practices for the industry.
And have you authored any publications concerning recovery housing?
Yes, several, the Recovery Housing Development Guidebook, a guidebook on, you know, what it takes to operate recovery housing within the state of Ohio with, you know, templates and recommendations, as well as a host of other best practice guidance, best practice, best practices for M-18 recovery housing, best practices for families with their children living in recovery housing, and several others. They're available on our website.
Okay, thank you. And about, how many recovery homes have you assisted or worked with?
We have over 400 properties that are certified at the organization, and I get calls every day from people seeking open recovery homes or asking questions, so I say easily hundreds throughout my five-year career.
Now, you were asked to offer your expert opinions in this matter, correct?
Yes.
And you were asked to opine on whether Landmark's treatment facility constitutes a hospital or a halfway house under the Sycamore Township zoning resolution, correct?
Yes.
What materials did you review to reach your conclusions?
I have reviewed the Landmark website, they describe their residential facility services as well as the portions of their zoning application where they describe their services.
Okay.
Ms. Gray, can you speak up a little bit louder? It's really hard for us to hear, though, I'm sorry.
And slow down maybe just a little, that might help.
Okay, all right.
Could we lower that microphone a little, maybe?
Yeah, we can try.
I don't want to touch it.
You've been working yesterday.
Do you want me to do it? I don't want to touch it. I have to bring a mic over.
Do you need her to repeat her answer?
Yes.
Is this better?
Let me tighten it up for you. I don't want it to, I don't want it to swing down. All right, go ahead and test.
Is this better? Can you hear me better?
A little bit, yeah, a little bit.
Okay, try to get really close to it.
So, I'll re-ask my question. What materials did you review to reach your expert opinions in this matter?
I reviewed the website for Landmark Recovery, where they described the services they provide at residential treatment facilities, as well as the zoning application, where they describe what services would be provided at the specific site.
Okay, and did you review the Sycamore Township zoning resolution, or at least excerpts of the zoning resolution?
Yes, I read the excerpts related to halfway house and hospital.
Okay, and based on your professional expertise and the materials you reviewed, is Landmark's treatment facility a halfway house, as that term is described in the Sycamore Township zoning resolution?
No.
Let me, you have in front of you what's been marked as Exhibit 11 to Landmark's brief. Can you turn to the last page, please? And is that your digital signature on this affidavit?
Yes.
And looking at Exhibit 11, the affidavit of Danielle Gray, is everything set forth in that affidavit true and correct?
Yes.
I want to direct your attention to paragraph nine of your affidavit.
Okay.
You say in paragraph nine that recovery housing levels one through three are similar to the definition of a halfway house under the Township's zoning resolution. Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay, can you explain to the board members what recovery housing levels one through three are?
Levels of recovery housing, I actually have the definition from the Ohio Revised Code. And I can read that. So, and this is from Section 340.01, Part A, Number Three, in the Ohio Revised Code. Recovery housing means housing for individuals recovering from alcoholism or drug addiction that provides an alcohol and drug-free living environment, peer support, assistance with obtaining alcohol and drug addiction services, and other alcoholism and drug addiction recovery assistance.
So, does the recovery housing level one through three include medical treatment?
No.
Okay, so what does that primarily include, the one through three service level?
Recovery housing levels one through three is primarily a housing environment, and it's about creating a community of recovery for people with substance use disorders. So, it focuses in on what we call the social model of recovery, really focusing on providing peer support, life skills development, and assisting individuals in connecting to services that are available within the community, and really, you know, helping them with, build what we call recovery capital. So, all of those things that people need to sustain long-term recovery.
Okay, for these levels one through three, these recovery homes that are akin to the halfway houses, what's the typical length of stay in one of those facilities?
For the data we've collected on our homes, we see that the average length of stay is about four months.
Okay, and you testified earlier that there are no medical services offered at these types of homes. Would, in your experience, would there be, you know, lease agreements? How does, how does one come to stay at one of these facilities?
Yes, there are lease agreements. Recovery homes are not exempt from Ohio landlord-tenant law, and so therefore, they must follow all of Ohio landlord-tenant law, and that includes having a lease.
So, you have a landlord-tenant relationship in these types of homes?
Yes.
And so, in your opinion or your experience, does a halfway house provide inpatient medical services?
No.
And who oversees halfway houses in Ohio?
It's by understanding that they are licensed by the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections.
And what types of individuals, what types of tenants do halfway houses generally serve?
They're generally a part of the Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections, so they're sentenced to or otherwise referred from a core program to be a part of a halfway house.
And based on your professional experience, Ms. Gray, is Landmark's treatment facility proposed here a level one, two, or three recovery house?
No.
And based on your professional experience and your review of the materials in this matter, would Landmark's proposal fall within the local definition of a halfway house?
Local definition of a halfway house? It would not fall under the local definition of a halfway house.
Thank you. I have no further questions at this time.
Just a couple of questions. You're not a zoning expert, are you?
No.
Do you know what the average length of a stay is in the hospital?
No.
Far less than 28 to 35 days, right?
I, I'm not an expert in that, I couldn't tell you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
You said this does not fall under the Sycamore Township zoning code definition of halfway house. You didn't explain why as to that. Why?
So, this, from my analysis of looking at, you know, the services that they are offering at Landmark, and what my understanding of what halfway houses are, they are not applying for licensure as a halfway house from the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections.
Yes, ma'am, my question wasn't, though, as to the definition of halfway house in the Ohio code. It was, you said you analyzed our zoning code, and that they did not fit the category there.
Yeah, and so, when I hear the term rehabilitation with the definition of a halfway house, I think about the Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections, and around rehabilitation as far as, you know, someone who is returning to the community after incarceration, and rehabilitation as far as that aspect of their life goes. And so, when I look at that definition and that term of halfway house, I know we've had a lot of discussion here today about what does rehabilitation mean, that's what I think of. And in Landmark's case, you know, they, that is not their primary purpose, to serve people who are involved with the Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections. You know, their primary purpose is to provide the medical services that are needed for the treatment of substance use disorders.
Would you agree there, based on your understanding of what you've studied, their primary purpose is the rehabilitation of purpose, sorry, of persons who are suffering from substance abuse disorders?
Again, it's that nebulous definition of rehabilitation. I feel like everyone's got a different, you know, thing of what that, that word means. But from what we've heard today, if, you know, yes, if, the medical services are going to be a part of a person's overall rehabilitation, but in that definition of halfway house, I still think of it as connected with rehabilitation when it comes to the Department of Corrections.
Yes, ma'am, you may be clear, you think of that, but does our code say that in the zoning resolution?
I believe you read the zoning code... I believe you read the zoning code. So the zoning code says what it says, the primary purpose of rehabilitation of persons. And I'm not aware of the rehabilitation being defined within the zoning code, if that's the question.
It adds in the zoning resolution, "Such services include drug and alcohol rehabilitation." Is that something Landmark does?
Yes.
Assistance to emotionally and mentally disturbed persons. Is that something Landmark does?
It depends on the definition of emotionally and mentally disturbed. I would say that they serve persons with substance use disorders, and I'm not sure what the definition of emotionally or mentally disturbed would be. But they do serve persons with substance use disorders.
There's not an actual requirement of a halfway house being residential in our zoning code, is there?
I've reviewed the definitions of hospital and of halfway house, and I'm not purporting to be an expert in the zoning resolution. So I do not know the answer to that question.
Other than the appearance of the word "house" in the term "halfway house," though, there's nothing you saw in our code which requires a halfway house to be a residential facility at all, is there?
I don't see the term "residential facility" within the... Yeah, I don't see the words "residential facility."
Okay, thank you.
If I could follow up. Madam Chair, when Trustee James was just questioning you, looking at the definition of halfway house in the zoning resolution, that definition also includes facilities that provide rehabilitation for prison parolees and juveniles, correct?
Yes.
And would that, would the rehabilitation for prison parolees and juveniles occur through the Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections?
That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you. Members of the board, you've been kind and indulgent with your time tonight. I appreciate it. At this time, I would move Landmark's brief, Exhibits 1 through 11, which include the affidavits of Mr. Luster, Dr. Wilder, and Ms. Gray into evidence, as well as our PowerPoint presentation. And we're prepared to leave copies of all of those things with you.
Thank you. Larry?
Just for procedural, and I, this is up to you, Tracy, but are there members of the public who want to testify here tonight as well? Anybody?
Larry, can I just interrupt? I thought we were going to hear from other folks from Landmark.
I think that's all the people they're calling.
Okay.
But I...
Well, I might have some questions for these people. They can redirect them.
Okay. Before you did your closing, I wanted to make sure there was no one else who was going to testify. Do you want to testify, ma'am? Okay. Is that okay with you if you wait till after they finish the testimony?
It is fine. I believe she needs to.
Would you prefer to give your closing now?
I think she has to.
No, that's fine.
She, I don't think she was sworn in.
Yeah, she should need to be sworn in.
Yeah. And if Tom had questions, if some of the other representatives were able to answer that first.
You can call half her and talk.
Okay.
How are you?
You've got to swear in now.
You weren't sworn in earlier?
I wasn't.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got?
I do. If you would state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Susan Weeks. I'm a retired nursing professor, and I'm a neighbor. I live across the street from Galbraith, in the immediate neighborhood. I'm speaking kind of professionally and also as a neighbor. Our neighborhood is not mentioned in the surrounding area, and we're only a block, a half a block, from a wonderful, this facility, from a wonderful, wonderful neighborhood. My other concern is that this is a huge, huge facility. I looked at all the other facilities you have in the United States. This is one of the largest, huge facility. Another point I am wondering about is that this is, we have a huge shortage of nurses. And for 20 nurses to take care of potentially 130-some patients who are going through withdrawal is beyond my comprehension. Working 24/7, it's beyond my comprehension. And I'm also wondering about the law director, not the law director, but the physician covering that I'm one, my question is, are there other physicians, or is Dr. Wilder the only physician covering eight facilities? Two nurse practitioners, maybe. I just, I can't comprehend the level of care, and that, and that's, those are my concerns. I just have to express those. Doesn't have to do exactly with zoning, but I am representing my neighborhood. It's a large, wonderful neighborhood. And those are my concerns. I had to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Ms. Weedman, did you say you had questions?
Yeah, I do.
Do we have the appropriate persons here?
I do. I'd like to know what efforts were made by Landmark Recovery to seek a location in Sycamore Township that met the Sycamore Township zoning requirements.
We submit to you tonight that we have, in fact, met the zoning requirements. The only thing in question tonight is, is this a permitted use in the DD Plan District? We submit that it is.
Okay.
And frankly, our research shows that there is not another facility like this in Sycamore Township. The need is acute.
Well...
But you, I'm not trying to be flippant about your question, but we believe that we have found this location.
No, no. I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying. And my point is that if we talked, the good doctor suggested he couldn't define rehabilitation, and because it was, quote, "subjective," and I think maybe we have a definition that is maybe subjective, but it is still part of our code as it relates to a halfway house. So I was curious if you were aware that we do have other, we do have other locations within Sycamore Township that you would fit very nicely into without the issue of a zoning question.
Respectfully, we think the evidence has overwhelmingly shown that we are not a halfway house under your zoning classification.
I get it. In going through all the information that you provided on locations throughout the country, I'd like to know, of all those locations, how many were not consistent with local zoning?
I'm not sure that we could provide an answer to that. And again, we submit tonight that we are fully consistent.
That's not the point. That's not, that's not the answer I was looking for. I was looking, I asked you a question, but you're giving me an answer to another question. That's not what I want. I want to know how many, how many of the facilities that you own are, were consistent with the local zoning when you located there? You must have some idea because you, otherwise you'd have been through this process that you're sitting in tonight. So perhaps you could give us, give us some guidance on it.
Mr. Weedman, and I'll ask Ms. Lubert to come forward. Are you saying no variances whatsoever, or you're focused on the use? Was there any type of use variance sought where it wasn't?
Well, you can, you can tell me then.
Okay. If you know, Ms. Lubert.
If I had to guess, I would say...
Give us, you could give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Michelle Lubert, 720 Cool Springs Boulevard, Franklin, Tennessee, 37206. If I had to guess out of our existing facilities, I would say three required CUPs or special use permits. We have several deals in the works right now that require variances, but a majority of our facilities existing, we have met the definition of a hospital. You know, and zoning is specific to the municipality, so I don't even know that that question is relevant here.
Well, and I would just point out, even where a conditional use permit was required, that meant that it was a conditionally permitted use.
Okay. Ms. Lubert, as you know, I don't think you had your attorneys here the last time, but as you know, when you were here on October 4th, you had asked us for a special accommodation to be considered a nursing home instead of a hospital for the purposes of parking, the parking requirements. And I think at the time, I had suggested, in 28 years that I've been here, I have never seen somebody come in and ask us to zone something and then change the definition of what they really were, just to meet certain requirements like zoning.
And respectfully, I believe I asked for a reasonable accommodation to, not to be classified as a nursing home, but to follow the parking regulations of a nursing home because our patients do not have vehicles similar to patients in a nursing home.
And Mr. Weedman, that was for an accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is frankly typical and routinely granted in some communities.
And I also believe your response was that you guys were accommodating us in classifying us as a hospital.
I, no, that wasn't my response. That may have been the staff's response, but that wasn't my response. You know, you remember what my response was, don't you? What was it?
I do. That you guys were accommodating us and classifying us as a hospital.
That's absolutely not what I said. Go back and look at the record. My response was that I reviewed this before, before we got, before the October 4th meeting, I reviewed this, and it was clear to me that this, this appeared to be, by definition, in our zoning code, a halfway house. Do you remember me telling you that?
I remember you saying that you had clas, that you were accommodating us and classifying us as a hospital.
That's not, that's not what I said. I never said I was accommodating anything. What I said was, this was a, this, by definition of our, in our zoning code, this was, this appeared to be a halfway house, and it did not meet the requirements of the district. Isn't that what I said?
I don't recall that.
It is. Let me just help you. It is. And since that time, you've provided additional information to us, but I have not seen any reason to change my mind as it relates to the definition within our zoning code of a halfway house. I have not seen it. I mean, if you have other information, look, I know you're doing great work out there. You're doing great work. There's a need for it. But we also have a zoning code that you have to meet. And that's why I asked you the question. Have you looked at other places in Sycamore Township? We could locate you another place in Sycamore Township. That wouldn't be a problem. But it appears you have not done that. It appears you've looked at this location, this location, only based on your subjective review that this is a hospital and not a halfway house. That's what you've done. So I don't have any other questions. Anybody else? I do. I'd just be here also. First of all, you indicated in your brief on this matter, and I think one of the witnesses said, and perhaps you testified earlier, stated a few moments ago, there's a pressing need, an urgent need for this in Sycamore Township. The brief, I believe, makes that statement, then goes on to talk about Hamilton County overall. Is there any evidence that's been presented here as to specific needs in Sycamore Township as to this, or even in the ZIP codes Sycamore Township encompasses as opposed to Hamilton County, and the entire state, of course, having a problem with addiction?
There is no facility in Sycamore Township that provides these medical services that Landmark is prepared to provide. And certainly, not only are their patients disabled by definition under federal law, you certainly can't discriminate against them further based on what ZIP codes they come from. I don't know the answer to how many people in Sycamore Township, Ohio, are suffering from opioid addiction, narcotic addiction, or alcohol addiction, or how many family members in Sycamore Township are afflicted with that problem within their family. What I can tell you is this community is not immune from the need for this type of treatment center, and should not close its doors as it feels as though it's doing this evening.
Absolutely not. The community should not close its doors.
Well, respectfully, trustee, when you say that a halfway house doesn't need to be residential, your lawyer, your law director knows this as well. Words in the zoning code need to be given their plain and ordinary meaning. This is not a halfway house. This is not housing of any kind. To seize upon a generic term in the definition of halfway house, "drug and alcohol rehabilitation," and try to say suddenly that the acute medical services being provided by this well-reputationed operator should be shoehorn into that definition as opposed to a hospital use makes no sense, frankly, and it is just rolling up the carpet of your community and closing its doors. And frankly, I don't understand why. While I take seriously the concerns of Mrs. Weeks, and we look forward to engaging with her and hearing her and the two other persons who attended this hearing, hearing their concerns, and making sure we can answer their questions, and we will afterwards, and address them. I've been to a lot of controversial zoning hearings in my career, and I'm sure you've been a part of them. This is not one of them. Respectfully, I think your residents understand that there's a need for this facility, and that's why they're not here. And so I'm simply asking you tonight to act in conformity with your code, with state law, with federal law, and help this township, help its residents, and not hurt its residents by exposing them to lawsuits and litigation when you know this isn't a halfway house. A halfway house could not provide these services by state licensure and by state law, and this is instead a hospital use, as your staff previously found three times. I do understand your question better now, trustee James, that you asked at the outset. You said these, this staff report says, "According to the representations of the applicant, this appears to be a hospital use." That's what this township does every day, bases its zoning decisions based upon the information and representations provided by the applicant. None of that information, or none of those representations by Landmark Recovery, had changed in the seven months we've been chasing this classification and this approval to get a facility open in Sycamore Township and help its people. None of that has changed. This should be approved, not only because it's the right thing to do, not only because it's the law, but because you should want to help this township by allowing this facility. And I hope that you will put this matter to rest and approve this so that this medical treatment can be provided in your community, because the need is so very real. I ask that our exhibits and brief and presentation be admitted into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. You interrupted me mid-question, and my question was, though, as to evidence specific to Sycamore Township, as alleged in the brief, your evidence is as to the county overall and the general perception in the community that there is certainly a problem with drugs. I'm not suggesting that we are intending to discriminate one way or another or push things to another ZIP code. That was not the focus of my question. There was a representation made that there was a specific need in Sycamore Township. Am I correct that there is not specific evidence backing that? That is my question.
I don't have facts or statistics unique to Sycamore Township this evening. What I have is an elected official who appears to be insinuating that none of his constituents are afflicted by these issues, or that there might be a need for this in this township. I resent that, and I think that's ridiculous.
I'm certainly not insinuating that.
Thank you.
May I speak? You may. You'll need to be sworn in. If you'd like to come up to the podium, please. If you could please state your name and address for the record, please, after being sworn in by law director.
Raise your hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give in this public hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got?
I so affirm. My name is Mary Ann Lucas, address 4087 Belfast Avenue, 45236. So I'm not in the immediate neighborhood. But just in the short time that I've been sitting here, I've heard at least three times councilmen offering other sites in Sycamore Township. And I would be interested in knowing what they are, and if you could consider them, or why they would not be suitable for you. Again, it's not, I mean, they have offered several times other sites in Sycamore. So some of the arguments you give, sir, are iffy, and I would just, again, be interested in more discussion about other options for the location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody from Landmark like the opportunity to respond? Would anybody from Landmark or representation like to respond to that question?
Yes, certainly. I don't care to argue with a resident of the township.
I just want to give you the opportunity. You don't have to take it.
No, I will simply just point out to the record that no actual sites have been offered, and clearly, hearing Mr. Weedman's comments earlier, there appears to be a disagreement based on his interpretation of the code.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Should we close hearing?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
This public hearing is now closed. It is 7:30, I believe.
Our exhibit's been accepted. I don't know if that's...
Yes. Yes. Urgently scheduled township trustee meeting. Let everybody take a quick break and...
May I ask a question then? I was expecting you to deliberate and decide this evening.
There, there is a, there is a, if you, if you look at the agenda for our meeting, that will, there is a, a portion in that meeting where we will, we will cover that.
Within the public.
Within the public meeting, yes.
I apologize. Thank you.
Yes. 7:36, I would like to call our regular trustee meeting for Tuesday, February 21st, February 21st, 2023 to order. We could all stand and, and rise from the indication, which is given tonight by?
Mr. Callum.
Mr. Callum.
Emily Fowler, we gather together tonight to do the business of our township. Grant each of us the gift of listening while others are talking, the gift of discernment as we discuss each issue brought before us, and wisdom as we seek ways forward for our township, its residents, and the businesses located within our boundaries. In your name we pray.
Amen. Who is raised standing as pledges?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Deeters would note that all three trustees are present. I would seek a motion for approval of the minutes for February, February 7th, 2023 trustee meeting.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Would you like to call the roll?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Swagman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
All right. Next on the agenda, Dan Deeters, Energy Alliance. Here it comes.
Good evening. Good to be out here. I believe that the last meeting you had given Mr. Callum's authority to sign under a certain rate, we executed that contract today. 6.4, 6.43, I did six of them today, so I know they're on the same range. We had executed several contracts in the last week and a half. This is one of the lowest we've done. We look for Duke's rate. Now, this'll, this'll start up in May when Duke's rate jumps because of the prior auctions they've had. So I look for Duke's rate to be in excess of nine cents, and folks in Sycamore Township will be paying four, 6.43, 6.43 cents per kilowatt hour. Second thing is, is we've added, we did this on our own, I hope it's okay. We had an option for renewable energy. So if folks would like to, when the opt-out letter goes out, they're able to call Energy Harbor, who is the company we executed with, and they can get a renewable energy product instead.
Same price?
No. I think it's 6.84, 86. Yeah. Renewable energy is a little bit more expensive now.
If I recall, was this a 24-month agreement?
It is two-year, it is two-year, two-year term. Correct.
Very good.
And if we see something in the future that looks attractive, we can, that's why we didn't do a three-year term, like we did last time, because we wanted to make sure we left our options open.
Very good.
As good as the better rate than we expected.
It was. We thought it'd be in the...
It's great.
The, the urgency today with Mr. Callum's was that the market dipped half a cent, so we took advantage of it.
That's great.
It's great work.
Thanks a bunch.
Thanks for being a tenant.
No, thank, thank you for, thank you for coming and sharing with us the good news. I know all of our residents appreciate all the work you do, so...
And you'll be getting a pretty good report for the winter time, of what happened in the winter. So we'll be sending that over soon as we get all the data back.
Perfect.
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
That's it?
Most thanks, buddy.
I, I've got a question, actually. You can give an update now. I know I've asked Tracy about this, and I think he's talked with you, but the, the DynaG overcharges and the refunds, you've been after them for that. Can you give an update on that? I know there's money still out there, including my expired gift card.
I have a, I got an email from that I did not get through as I walked in today. So I will share it with Mr. Callum tomorrow, and I'm sure he'll share it with you, and...
Okay, great.
And we'll figure out where we are on that, and we'll go from there.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate you coming tonight. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda are public comments. Mr. Eucaert, do we have anybody that has signed up in the public comment portion of our agenda?
I do not believe so.
Okay. Do we want to just double check, is, was there anybody that had signed up to speak in the public comment portion of this meeting? I don't want to...
There was one, Mary Ann Lucas, but perhaps that was for the zoning commission.
Yes, she spoke.
Or, or the...
For the zoning, okay. Very good. Very good. All right. Well, you're still up, Mr. Eucaert, because now we're on the planning and zoning report.
Yes, just very briefly, on March 7th, 2023, at 6:00 PM, the board will hear case 2023-01-MA. It's a major adjustment to a PUD at 8810 Montgomery Road. The proposed use is a medical office for that. For the Groom CIG case, that case will need to be refiled. The kind of the tentative target date for the trustees to hear that is March 21st, 2023. On March 6th, at 5:30 at the Station 93 Firehouse on Deerfield Road, there'll be a public open house from 5:30 to 6:30 PM with CIG. And then on March 8th, at 6:00 PM, the zoning commission may be scheduled for that. So with that, that's all I have.
Very good. Next on our agenda is... The resolution as it relates to zoning case that we just heard, 2022-17-MA.
So I have a, an, an approved proposed resolution or a deny proposed resolution?
I'll make a motion that we, we deny zoning case 2002-17-MA.
That's, that's 2022-17-MA. I think you said 2022.
2022-17-MA.
And I will, I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes. I'll, I'll, we made comments in the public hearing, of course, to some degree, and had questions here, and artful interchange near the end, I would say. But in looking at this and listening to our zoning people and to our law director, and looking at the definition of halfway house versus the definition of hospital in our zoning resolution, it seemed clear to me that the name halfway house may be distracting, because there are other concepts in the world and elsewhere in the law as to what that might mean under some, some circumstances. But in our code, it has a meaning that this proposed Landmark facility fits into. Landmark has a great mission, does great things, they're great places to do that. But in a DD district in Sycamore Township, where this happens to be, it does not fit in what our zoning code allows. If you find another place in the township in a conforming zone, please come here. That'd be great. But I, I'm opposed to approving the project, because I don't think it fits in the definition of halfway house as defined in our zoning resolution, as opposed to how it may be defined elsewhere. So... I, I'm confusing myself. It's been a long meeting already here. It does not fit in the definition of hospital. Thank you for correcting me. It does fit in the definition of halfway house. So if I just said otherwise, you know what I mean.
Mr. Weedman?
Thank you. No comments? Done with mine.
Mr. Deeters, would you call the roll?
Mr. James?
So the motion was to deny, correct?
Correct.
So aye.
Ms. Swagman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
So do we now need to consider a resolution?
Read the title of the resolution.
Would you read the title? Yeah, would you read the title of the resolution, please?
I apologize. Resolution denying case number 2022-17-MA for a major adjustment to a PUD for Landmark Recovery of Louisville LLC in Sycamore Township and dispensing with a second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve. I think we should probably second, probably go through this again.
Well, let's do, let's do it again. So you're making the motion to approve the resolution denying case number...
Correct. Correct.
And I will second that.
All right, now let's call the roll.
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Swagman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
All right. Let's circulate that for signature. Sheriff Patrol report.
I don't have anything tonight. Anyone have any questions for me? I'd be happy to address you.
Not offhand. I don't have any.
Nope. Good report.
Thank you. Good report. Chief Penny?
Jeff, could you print that out?
EMS and fire report.
I want to give you a quick update since I wasn't here at the last meeting on the golf cart fire. Our fire investigator has been working very closely with Cincinnati Kart Insurance Company, and their investigators could try to determine the cause of the fire. What we do know so far is that there was about 100 carts that were involved, and there's going to be major damage as far as a, a dollar loss. There was carts averaging from, running from $2,000 to $20,000 that were out there. A mixture of gasoline and electric carts. The crews did battle some issues with the gas runoff and the battery acid runoff. There's a creek that's fairly close to that area, and they were trying to keep it from getting into the creek, and that, we did have some fire hose that got damaged that we're working with Cincinnati Kart on. And we're in the process of trying to get the, determine the cause and get this wound up, so...
Chief, you don't know what the cause of the, when it might actually started?
Not, no, not, not that I want to say.
Not officially. Okay.
It's, we do know that it was very isolated, and because they were packed so close together, it just went after another type of thing. So gasoline, battery acid, and...
On two pages.
Plastic, wood, fiberglass was the main factor of all of it, so...
But no building, no structure damage, just the carts?
Minor. There was some.
It's pretty, it's cleaned up now. Looks pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, it's not too bad, yeah. And the only other thing was, we had some equipment that was declared obsolete that we put on GoDeals, and we were able to get $1,025 for it.
What kind of equipment?
The hydraulic pumps, some old hydraulic pumps that we had from some old rescue equipment that we no longer use.
That money on the road budget.
Very good. Thank you. Roads Maintenance and Recreation, Mr. Rilshoffer.
Good evening. I have a request for the board to consider a motion to advertise for Gideon Lane Culvert Improvement Project.
I move we advertise for the Gideon Lane Culvert Improvement Project.
Second.
Any discussion?
But yeah, Steve, are we still on for that for the spring? What kind of timetable we got?
Yeah, I reached out to a contractor to try to get a timeframe on the box culvert. It's an eight-by-seven box culvert, 135-foot length. They said the lead time is going to be eight to 12 weeks after the contract is approved, if everything goes as planned. So we're looking at probably a start of construction in June, if everything goes as planned, which Mr. Callum's pointed out, we had a discussion, it probably will work out better with summer construction due to that road's going to have to be detoured, won't be conflicting with school bus traffic.
Gotcha. I'm getting, I'm getting calls from Cincinnati Bell. They want to, they, they can't go anywhere until that's, project is done, so...
Yeah, that's correct.
They got, they got the itch to go, so...
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Anything else, Steve?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Deeters, would you call the roll?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Swagman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
All right.
I do have a question about something. I'm not sure if it's for Steve or Tracy, so you guys can fight over who gets the answer, maybe, but...
Parks? Anyone want to talk about parks?
Yeah, well, it'll involve parks, actually, so probably you see. I'm, I'm just curious as to where we are now in the festival planning stages. I know we have the Spind Dr's contract in our last meeting. We've had some pledges coming in already for sponsors, which is looking great, also. looking great also. Do we have an overall budget put together, and where are the plans going now?
We just finalized securing RVs, which was kind of the last, one of the last pieces of the puzzle. We have been in negotiations with a carnival ride supplier. Believe we're going to try to meet with them again later this week to finalize details on that. But we have pretty much everything in line to go.
So we have contracts with all the bands. So we had $150,000 appropriated. That's obviously not what our budget is, because we, we will have pledges for that. You know, right now we're around $9,000. I think that is what the number came in last month. But we appropriated over just not knowing where we were going. We do not want to go over $100,000 even before we get our...
Sponsor revenue.
Yeah, our sponsor revenue. But we have all the bands. Like Steve said, one of the toughest things to find was rides. Apparently, we put a lot of ride companies out of business, you know, with two, almost three years of not being able to do shows. So we really looked hard for that. We finally found somebody that we've met with twice. They've come out to the site and walked it, and they're excited about it. We've got most, all of our food vendors wrapped up, so it's moving in the right direction. Tents, RVs.
It's exciting.
So let me ask the elephant in the room question, so to speak. What's the beer plan? Do we have craft breweries coming in?
We are still working on that. We are hoping to have one local craft brewery come in. We have not contacted that. That's something that we are in the process of doing right now.
March 1st is in the township. Maybe we can get them to come.
Guess they are.
Very good. Thank you.
Law Director report.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report?
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Trying to draw an envelope.
I'm going to speak really slowly.
Could have picked up your notes and worked through first.
Mr. Callum's Administrator report.
Okay, so the first thing I have is for our Deer Park Jed, we need to appoint somebody for the employees of the district. So we have Cynthia Cerna, who is the business manager at the property. So I would like to ask for a motion to appoint Cynthia Cerna as the representative of the persons employed in the district to fulfill the original four-year term.
I'll make a motion to appoint Cynthia Cerna as district employee representative of the Jed Board.
And I will second that.
She is the, you said she's the manager of the...
She is the business manager.
The business manager for the apartments?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
How do you spell her last name?
C-E-R-N-A.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I think she, I think she took over for Ishmael, maybe?
I believe she did.
Got it. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, Mr. Deeters?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
Also, I have a resolution. A resolution amending 2023 appropriations for the Station 93 Projects Fund and the Deerfield Park Project Fund, dispensing with a second reading and declaring an emergency.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
You want to just fill us in on the details here?
Yes, so this is still the, the funds from when we built that. The appropriations for Station 93 are decreased to zero because we have, we have used all that. There was money sitting there that we used at the station in the park last year, so the appropriations had to be changed. And there was a mistake on, on the other one that was, I believe, 37 cents. So we are changing the appropriation to the amount of $76,018.27 to fix that 37-cent error.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Deeters, would you call the roll?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
The only other thing I have is purchase orders for tonight. We have PO 23-87 for Wurzelbacher staging, $6,150 is the staging for the festival. And 23-90, advantage tent and party rental for $5,780.13. And this is also for the festival. This is for tent tables and chairs.
Motion to approve the purchase orders.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Mr. Deeters?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
Mr. Deeters, Fiscal Officer report.
So for cash dispersed, excuse me, cash receipts, we had $4,838,793.19. For dispersments, we had $90,401.73. A complete listing of the cash receipts and the dispersment is in the package.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Deeters?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
Trustee comments.
I'm speechless tonight.
What?
I know that's kind of shocking.
Wow.
Someone mark this down on a calendar.
Circle that day. Okay. Mr. James?
A few quick things. I'd like to thank Mr. Weedman for moving things along with the Heitmeyer Power situation with you. Thanks for doing that and for reporting the neighborhood about it. And just a note, note to the public and to staff, on this past holiday weekend of President's Day on Sunday, Sunday morning, I, I got an email from Beth Gunderson about something I had asked her to take care of sometime, whenever it was convenient. She took care of it Sunday on the holiday weekend. I thought, wow, that's great. And then a few hours later, I get an email from Jeff U. Carter about something too, on a Sunday on the holiday weekend, also reporting he had acted on something. And then I got one from Larry later in the day, too. So you guys are working too hard, but thanks for all the work you do for the township. That's nice to see people going above and beyond.
24/7.
That's right.
There you go.
Thank you.
There you go. All right, well, it's been quite an evening, so I will make these few announcements. The Board of Zoning Appeals meeting slated for Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023, has been canceled. There is an open house on Monday, March 6th, from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. at the Schuler Community Room, Deerfield Road, regarding proposed zone change for Grooms and East Kemper Roads. That's the project Mr. U. Carter was speaking of earlier. There is then also a special zoning commission meeting for general purposes on Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Administration Building. And for all other scheduled meeting and events, please see the published calendar on our website. With that being said, I would like to adjourn to executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22-G1, to consider the discipline of a public employee.
And that's a motion to do that, right?
And I would, yes, I need a motion to do that.
You just made a motion.
I just, I just made that motion. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to second it.
Sorry.
Quick question. Do we need to add anything to that? Is it something you and I talked about earlier?
I think it's supposed to be.
Okay, we specifically said to consider that, as to it.
Okay. Why don't we add to discipline and compensation, if you don't mind?
Nope, I can do that. Okay, let's revise that. I make a motion to adjourn you to executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22-G1, to consider the discipline of a public employee and compensation of a public employee.
I'll second.
Discussion. Mr. Deeters?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned to executive session at 8:59 p.m.
7:50.
Sorry, 7:59 p.m. It just...